Good morning and welcome to the Citrus County BOCC workshop this morning on Port Citrus. Commissioner Barrett has volunteered to do the invocation once again, and that will be followed by the pledge. If you'd please rise.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us as we have a meeting of the minds and we go over important things for the county of Citrus. Be with our leaders here, be with our state leaders and our federal leaders as things go on in the world around us, and may there be peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, real call, please.
Yes ma'am, this is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 23rd day of June 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bayes, First Vice Chair Joanna Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barrett, Commissioner Jeff Kennard, Commissioner Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise Diamond-Lynn.
Thank you.
Mr. Bond.
Bam.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. How are you today?
I'm doing fantastic. I'm actually in a really good mood since my favorite college baseball team won the championship last night, or yesterday, so in a good mood. Today, we're going to do another workshop on potential economic development here in Citrus County. I'm sure everyone is aware, we are going to be talking about the famed Port Citrus. I'm going to jump right into the PowerPoint. It's going to be a little bit of history. We're going to take a walk back in time and then come to the present, and then talk about some of the opportunities going forward and what that might look like, and then try to figure out if it's the direction that we need to go and what the best course of action is. So, there we go. So, Port Citrus, then in now. Is this thing working? There it goes. So, we're going to, as I said, we're going to start in the past. We're going to go all the way back to, actually, the 1940s. So, in 1942, Congress authorized the construction of the Cross Florida Barge Canal. As you can see from the map here, it was designed to start on the west side in what was in the Gulf of Mexico, and that was where Port Citrus or the Barge Canal is today. That was going to be the western end, and it was going to go all the way up to Palatka, up in Putnam, and it was, that was going to be the east end. And we'll talk about a little bit about Putnam a little bit later possibly, but you can see it was going to transverse pretty much the entire peninsula. 1960s, so it took 22 years from 1942 to actually 1964 to start construction. Here, we have another shot of the actual construction happening. That was a long period of time. It was raising money, and it was all federal money, by the way. It was a federal project, and there was a lot of controversy with it, as you could imagine. And this is a design in 1969, the first feasibility study for the west end. So, remember, this was supposed to transverse the entire peninsula. This is what it was originally designed to look like, being the westernmost point. You can see lots of infrastructure in there. At the time, there was even plans for rail access down to the south where it comes into the now, what is the Duke Power Plant Facility down there. 1970s, we start the first bridge construction for Highway 19 to get across that canal. There's another shot of the locks at the end. So, the reason for showing the locks is because in 1971, President Richard Nixon halted construction of the Cross Florida Barge Canal. It was one-third complete, and approximately $74 million had been spent on land acquisition and construction to that point. So, we fast forward again into 1984. So, it was dormant. Nothing really happened for a while. And in 1984, there was a special legislative act that created the Citrus County Port Authority, or Port Citrus. It comprised of, the Port Authority itself is comprised of the five county commissioners, and they are empowered to manage the facility and collect tariffs like any other port would operate. Again, this was a state legislative action, so it is in place today. Now, speed ahead from 1984, when it was actually authorized, to the 90s, the state started looking at its seaport system and decided to revise it a little bit to make it more universal, universally beneficial for the state as a whole. So, they created the EFSTAD Council, the Florida Seaport Transportation Economic Development Council. What it does is, it takes all representation from all of the existing seaports, and they sit on this council. They have access to state funds as well. They have a grant fund, and it was in an effort to kind of keep them from being little chiefdoms and fighting over economic opportunity and fighting over clients to kind of work as a full system for the state. So, they can all come together. They have access to funds to actually do infrastructure and all that good jazz. So, they kind of like plan the seaport mission for the entire state instead of each individual piece competing with one another. So, how does this organization work? And I'm going to touch on this a little bit too, because it's important to understand that we, as Citrus County, as a port authority, we actually have a seat on this, and I'm going to get to that in a second. But the way this thing is set up is, the Florida Governor and the legislature, they both, you know, have a say in what happens with FDOT. So, the Florida Seaport, the EFSTAD Council is part or a division of the Seaport Division of FDOT. So, it's all housed within there, and that's where you get the EFSTAD Council. Now, the Florida Port, the Port Commission, they're a little bit different. They're a nonprofit organization. They act as the secretary or the administrative orem of EFSTAD Council. So, the EFSTAD Council is made up of all the port authority directors across all the systems, and they use the ports council as their administrative piece. So, they handle all the paperwork. They also, because they're a nonprofit, they have their own income streams that they can go out and do marketing for their members and things of that nature, and lobbying as well. So, again, I've already touched on some of this. What is the benefits of being a part of the EFSTAD Council? Access to state funding, provides technical support to ports, 50-50 match for local projects, assistance in understanding Florida's international trade and economic development and job creation. Again, it's for the growth of the seaport system for the state. It's not necessarily just for each individual port. Otherwise, if you didn't have the setup that they have today, with access to this funding, everybody would be competing individually, and typically, your larger ports are going to win out most of the time. So, continuing forward, after the EFSTAD Council was created and the seaport system was revamped, Citrus was not originally part of that. So, Port Citrus was not originally a member of the EFSTAD Council, but in 2011, the regs were amended to include Port Citrus. Now, as part of that, the Port Authority or the Port Citrus had to conduct a feasibility study, and had to be done within a certain amount of time by the, I believe is July 1 of 2014, if I'm not mistaken. Alone with that authorization to put the Port Citrus as a member of the EFSTAD Council, they were given grant funds through FDOT to conduct that feasibility study. So, as they were pursuing the study, in 2012, the county took it upon itself to adopt Chapter 17 in the county's comprehensive plan, which is a port element. So, that's another step of establishing that this is something that we want to pursue. And then in 2013, the feasibility study was conducted, solidifying Port Citrus membership on the EFSTAD Council. In that feasibility study, it does say what is possible and what type of ports you could possibly look at becoming. Obviously, it's too shallow for a large container port or for cruise ships. There's, the depth of that canal is just not, it's not suitable for that type of activity, but you can bring barges up and down. So, goods, product can move in and out. Also have a link on there for the study, which is on the ports council's website, if anyone is interested in reviewing it. So, let's talk a little bit about the actual seaports here in Florida. The current seaport system in Florida, we've got 16 seaports in name. There's only two that are not active or physically moving. Citrus is one of them, and Port of St., Port of Port St. Joe is another one. Now, they have an actual facility there, but they haven't had any real activity in a long time. As you can tell by looking at this map here, from Tampa Bay on the west side, northwest, there's only two other ports that are actually active right now. That would be Pensacola and Panama City. Port Citrus could be another major asset for the port system as far as servicing, you know, goods and products for the central portion of the state. If you look at it, it's ideally situated for that, which is part of the reason why they looked at the original Cross Florida Barge Canal starting in that area. It would go through the center of the state, allowing it to feed off into other areas from the center out. Some of the economic impacts that you can see from the seaport systems, now, these are always about a year or so delayed. These numbers are from '23. There'll probably be some new numbers coming out soon from the port system itself, but you can see it supports nearly 1.2 million jobs. The system contributes over $195 billion in economic value. That's 12.2% of $1.6 trillion Florida GDP. So, that's a lot of economic impact from a system as a whole. You can see the number of jobs induced, indirect, direct jobs created. It is a huge economic benefit when you're talking about activities running through a port. Here's some other fast facts and numbers for the port system as a whole. And we already talked about the GDP impact, gross economic funds coming in. You can see that one of the things that has been talked a lot about, especially for Port Citrus, is the possibility of tying into military operations, DoD facilities and testing. You can see that Jack's Port and Port Carnival or Cannaveral, sorry, are the only two right now that really support that for the most part. Move into, so, a lot of questions revolve around, well, how do we, if we want to go forward with a port, how much area, how much land do we need? You have some ports, like Port Tampa, which is the largest geographically, physically, with the biggest footprint in acreage, and then you have others that can go all the way down to four acres. Now, St. Pete's a little bit of a different animal because of the location, but disregarding that, when you look at the others, you can see that sweet spot is around that 15 to 20 acre spot, somewhere up in that range. Makes it a very viable and very feasible port for opportunity and for development. So, you can do it as small as four or five acres. You can go as large as is available. There's really no real limit to what you can do. And the reason I picked that under 50 public acres is because Fernandina has that one extra acre, so I couldn't say under 25, 20 or less. So, what does, we've walked through how we've got to where we're at right now when we're talking about the actual Port Citrus. We have a port authority, which is, consists of the five members of the BOCC, but what are we looking at today? So, the problem with Port Citrus is, we have to have property. In order to actually have a port, you got to have a place to actually conduct business. And when you look at the Barge Canal, this map is a little dated, but it gives you a very good representation of the property ownership that's on here. So, if you look, the green areas there, as you can see, are all state land, and then you have this yellow area here, which is a mining operation, and north of that, you have other private property here. That gray area, for the most part, is the only spots or the general area that you could actually put a port, because this state property cuts it off on the south side, oops, sorry, and you have just that little sliver of grass. I say little, it's actually a large area of developable property. The further west that you get, the less that you're able to develop on it because of the type of soil and swampy and all that good stuff.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Sure.
Could you go back to that map?
Sure.
And could you point out where Duke Energy is on the map?
On this map, it's below all of this, so it's not even on this picture here. It's further south.
It's south of that.
Yes, yes. So, you can see the other mining operation all the way down at the bottom. You can see their pond, basically. It's down below that.
Okay. I ask that because in the history of this, this has come up so many times in Citrus County, and then the port wasn't going to work because of the shallow waters, and I believe the county many years ago had reached out to Duke Energy because they could make it work only with Duke Energy's permission, and Duke Energy said no. So, I didn't know.
Duke Energy has its own channel there, and it's got a, I want to say a 25-foot draft, so it's a lot deeper than what this canal is. And it's, because it's private property, you would have to work with Duke. They do not, you know, Duke is a partner of ours, but they, that's their property, and they use it for their goods or product coming in and out, whether it be coal or whatever else they're using there.
So, that's where I'm a little bit stuck, because many years ago, I guess whatever option you're talking about now, unless this is a different route, was not going to work, and it could only work with Duke.
No, it could work. That, if you go back to the feasibility study that was done back in 2013, 2014, it says, it looks at this entire area. I think I had another slide that showed it. Let me go back a little bit.
While you're looking for it, I'll chime in just a little bit. One of the reasons that we, back in the day, looked at Duke is, they have a lot of available land out front. And at the time, Brunswick, Georgia, is the port where they bring most of the cars in. And if you, if you look at population bases, you look from the center of the United States going from about Denver to the east seaboard, that's where all the population lives. So, as they're bringing goods, that's why there was a big push to get canals drafted out to 50-foot dredging, to get products and goods and services in. They've got to go around the horn. Most of it comes in in Long Beach Longboat in California, and then they come around, and they were having to go all the way up to the Georgia side to deliver these cars. So, the idea was, is if we could have struck a deal with Duke Energy at the time to use their canal and lease the land where they could have stored the cars, but because of security issues and the other things going on, that was, that's the reason they said no.
So, this, obviously, we could not do anything with cars, so this is just going to be different, which I'll have a lot of questions about that, but I don't want to stop your presentation. So, maybe you'll answer them.
We'll have plenty of time to go through all of that.
Yeah.
So, this gives you an idea of where that feasibility study was initially studying, and this was before all this property started changing hands and everything. They did look to the south side, but because of the state land that runs along the entire length of the canal, it's not feasible to actually do it there. It's better to do it on the north side because you have easier access, and you're not disrupting the park system there. So, I'm going to jump back. Don't think it's working. There we go. I apologize. The clicker doesn't seem to want to. Yeah. Keep going. All right. So, Port Citrus now. Here's a more modern-day representation of the property line, and I apologize, I am not a whiz at coloring in spots. So, I took this from the appraiser's website. You can see the area here on the north side. You have the Key Cut in the center. All of that from this, this center line, just west of the Key Cut over to Highway 19. All of that is private property, with the exception of the little sliver that we have been trying to put a public boat ramp on. That is also state property. So, jumping into what Commissioner Finnegan had asked, the different types of opportunities that we could see from a Port Citrus. What are the different types of ports? Obviously, because the depth of the canal, it's only 10 to 12 foot at best right now. Over there, it was originally cut to be 15 to start. They had envisioned to go a lot deeper than that, but when they started, it was at 15, and over the years since they started back in the 60s, it's just kind of filled in a little bit. So, you're now around 10 to 12, depending on what spot you're in. It can be cleaned out a little bit to get it back down, but you can't go too deep. So, what are the types of ports? Because the draft depth limits you. You can't do container. You're not going to get large boats in there with the big cranes and pulling containers off that, and you're not going to do cruise lines. We've already eliminated that. That's not an option, because you don't have the draft depth. What you can bring, because it is a barge canal, you can bring in dry and liquid bulk, and you can also do brake bulk. So, and for those that aren't aware, brake bulk is things that, think of like a big tractor or something, a huge industrial piece of machinery that's not going to fit in a container. It's not going to, you can't, don't want to break it down into a million pieces, so you break it down into three or four big pieces, and then you put it back together. Or a crane that you don't bring it all in at one time. You take it and put it in sections. That would be a brake bulk. Liquid bulk could be things like gas, fuel, diesel, things along those lines where you could store it. Right now, the Port of Tampa, and it has been for a long time, is the largest port by volume in the state, and brings in quite a bit of, especially this region's, fuel. We all saw from last year's hurricanes, when that port was shut down, getting fuel in and out became an issue, and finding fuel was a major issue. We had to truck it in from long, long ways away, which makes it even more expensive. Having a port such as Citrus that can have a yard for liquid storage or dry storage to bring those goods in would go a long way to helping in a time of emergency, but also bringing down prices in the central region of the state. It takes pressure off of Port Tampa. While they might have the largest footprint right now, they really can't grow too much more because of what's around them. Everything else has grown up around them, so they're going to be kind of limited on their, on their size that they can expand to. They do a lot of container as well. It's easier to grow up with container, because you can stack them, than it is with either a dry bulk or liquid bulk, because you need more space. You have to have more room. One of the fortunate things that we have here is we have room on the north side of the canal. We can spread it out, and you can bring liquid and dry bulk. And when I say dry, I mean things like fertilizer, feed, seed, corn, stuff like that, that comes in, and you either scoop it out or pump it out and store it. You can also bring in coal. You could bring in anything else that needs to be barged in. So, it could take a lot of pressure off of Tampa, allow them to go for more container, more cruise ships, if they would like to do that, but it also gives us an entryway into a large market. And it, when you think of the port too, I know a lot of folks focus on, because it's Port Citrus, it's in Citrus County, but you got to think a little bit beyond that. You got to, it's really more of a regional asset, as opposed, yes, it's a very big asset for Citrus County as a whole, but it also benefits the entire region. As I said, if you're able to bring in goods and product or ship it out closer to where you're at now, say in Marion or Orlando or wherever, if those products are able to come in from if those products are able to come in from Citrus as opposed to coming in from Tampa or coming in from another port on the east side, those companies would be more apt to utilize and have that option to bring their costs down. Bring the costs down for everyone else who's buying that product on the end or whatever they're using it for. So there's a lot of applications that you can tie in. So when you think of it, think of it more as a regional piece. And bringing companies and services from outside Citrus, not necessarily just Citrus. So that's something to keep in mind. Any questions as we go? Okay. So that's just an idea of what we can start with. The way I look at it is if you have the property, and a lot of folks ask, well, shouldn't we have the company or a couple of clients before we actually go and buy property and get the infrastructure put in place to be able to utilize the port? You can, but when you're trying to market and bring in a user or users of your services at a port that you've been trying to start for 40 years, they're going to say, well, I think we need some buy-in first from the commitment from the public entity before we actually invest our dollars as well. So and also the development of infrastructure in a port, whether this is five acres, 20 acres, whatever the case may be. You still have to build it. You still have to build it out. The property purchase is just one piece. The property acquisition is just one piece. That's the first step. The next step is building it out. And that takes time, as we all know from infrastructure projects. They take time to come to fruition. From the time you put the first shovel in the ground to the time that you actually can utilize it. The timing of this is if we were, the idea is if we were to acquire the property within the next year or so and then begin putting in infrastructure and working on that master plan that's going to be required as well for the shape and what it's going to look like. By the time that gets put in place, maybe around the same time, five or six years from now, that the Parkway will be terminating on Highway 19, just south of there, which will also open up more traffic to the southern portion of the state and bring more traffic towards Citrus as well. I know in one of the earlier slides, one of the ideal things would be to have rail. So you want multimodal at these types of facilities as much as possible. But the rail is still a possibility, but it's more of a very, very long, long game plan. Because you have a lot of different variables that go into place there. And there's train tracks that run straight into the Duke facility, as we had talked about. But over the years, since that first, very first feasibility study was done back in 69 to today, that property has changed quite a bit. And you've got a lot more entities, particularly the state, involved in that area. So getting rail there from that direction, it'd be challenging at best. I'm not saying it's impossible because I don't believe anything is impossible, but it would be challenging. You could always, talking about multimodal, you have plenty of room there, too, for, again, another airstrip. That is an option with these ports. You can have access to, you know, the air. Now, you can always truck it down to Crystal River as well, which is another option. And I know with the extension of that runway, you'll be able to get some different or slightly bigger planes in there. I'm not a airport expert. I know you probably know a little bit more than I do, Commissioner, but it is all, tying it all together, it makes it an option. And it makes it a bigger economic engine than what it is right now, which is we don't have anything there. So.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Just for a point of clarification, it's not any larger airplanes. It's just more functional for the current airplanes that land there. Because that was a point of angst in the citizens. So I just wanted to, you know, you have to take off with a lot less fuel and then you've got to hop to Ocala and spend your fuel money over there versus Crystal River is essentially the difference.
Again, I'm not the airport expert.
One thing that was interesting that came across my desk is a good friend of mine, this was a couple of years ago. She was trying to become the COO of an interesting startup. And it was an airplane manufacturer that was going to essentially have a takeoff on sea, but then fly within ground effect or in this case sea effect. And it was going to be a compute, a multi-engine, electric commuter airplane that serviced basically all the coastal cities. So you would be flying offshore, but very, very low to the water because of the ground effect makes you go further, just put it that way. And they ended up choosing Boston, which really surprised me because Boston is so very icy in the winter versus a place like Florida. And what they would do is essentially demate the wings and ship it overseas to wherever they were selling to. So that would have been perfect for this, but they chose Boston. I don't know if, pardon the pun, they'll get off the ground anyway, but.
Right.
It's a startup.
Well, while we're talking about that, other options with access to a port, it's a good segue into, these days, there is the Advanced Air Mobility, AAM, I believe is what they're called. They're smaller passenger planes. Think of it as a car in the air that goes from.
EV-tall. Electric, vertical, takeoff and landing.
Right. Yeah, so there's a lot of interesting things out there. Some are manned and some are unmanned as far as pilots go. So there are interesting tie-ins that you can have to new industry that's coming online. Not to mention if you are able to tie into defense, you know, DOT, working with even possibly Space Florida. They're obviously out of room over there. But when you think of space, don't just think of the things that go up in the air, the big pieces that go up. There is a lot of smaller pieces that are tied into all of that to get to that launch time to get to that final rocket or ship or whatever it may be. There is a lot of testing. There's a lot of component pieces that need to be built, tested and tried out. And they can do those anywhere. They take these things from a lot of different places and then they bring them all together. So with an area like this, where you have lots of room, that's approximately 500 or so acres that's up there. And, you know, straight shot out to the Gulf, it's a good spot to do a lot of testing, especially particularly with drones or anything else along those lines. So you can tie it into a lot of different industries from, you know, just services and products like consumer goods and fuel or to defense, which we have. The Coast Guard has recently bought a piece of property and they're actually building out there right now. I've got a little video at the end that kind of does a little flyover from a few months ago. And it's impressive to see how much they've actually built out there so far. So with the Coast Guard making a spot there, you can see right here on this map, right by the corner of 19 and the barge canal, that first piece of property, as I mentioned earlier, is state property. And the property right next to it, that makes that little funny-looking L, upside-down L, that is the Coast Guard spot. And they're actually putting some buildings up right now. They've got their slips in, they're moving right along out there.
And is ours the first corner?
That's, yeah, that first corner is where we would want to, that basically looks like it's being hugged by the.
The flag lot.
You're right. That is the state property that we were looking at putting the boat ramp.
And I'm so.
No. But what piece of property is that?
Highlight it.
The.
That corner right there. That is the.
That's, that's our, where we want to do the.
The boat ramp.
Boat ramps. And then that flag lot surrounding it is the Coast Guard.
Yes. No, that is the Coast Guard.
Go to the next one.
The.
Left. State property.
Coast Guard, see how it goes up and then T's over? It's a, basically a flag lot. I believe capsule recovery had been mentioned, too. But, you know, into the Gulf.
Yeah, and so if you remember the, I believe it was the astronauts that got rescued. When they came down, did I think they, did they recover them in the Gulf? And they brought them up to Tallahassee for some reason. But that can be capsule recovery of smaller vessels.
Tallahassee is clearly waterfront, so, you know.
It didn't make any sense to me either, but that's how I was scratching my head when they said they brought them there. But you can see where coming into Citrus, especially if you're tied into some type of government operation that's into the space world or aeronautics, you can, or avionics. It's an easier pull from the Gulf to Citrus and then back to the east coast of the peninsula. So property, as we were talking, we've identified the general area. But the next step, as I said, is purchasing property or acquiring property. And we've been looking at different options. I know we've talked about earlier this year about buying property, which we had money, requested money for the CIP to put away to start purchasing that property. That is an option. To be quite honest, using county funds, buying it outright, that's your quickest, cleanest, fastest route to go, right? But we also know it's very expensive. And it's not something that you can just pull that money off the tree because that's money you would be taking from other things that you have going on. And we know we have a lot of other needs as well. So understanding all of that, we've been looking around for other options. One of the other proposals that I feel is probably our best bet at this point is to entertain a land swap with DEP. Now, we have been trying to, that little piece of property that we were talking about in these two pictures here, the one on the left, you can see the state property where we've been wanting to put the boat ramp. Unfortunately, due to limited funding, we've kind of had to go back to the drawing board on the boat ramp. So a proposal that's been kicked around and we've discussed with DEP and they're interested in taking a look at it. They can't make any guarantees, but would be to do a land swap, a piece of property that we have next to the Wiltokuchi Forest. That's about 44, 45 acres approximately. Has an easement problem. Can't really get to it. There's no roads there. It's county-owned property. Swapping that piece of property for that DEP site where we would put the boat ramp. So in addition, because you have multiple agencies involved, you would have one agency under DEP that currently has the canal property. You would have a separate agency taking ownership of the property that we would swap for or give them in place of. That would go to a different agency. So the agency that would be giving up the property would be like, well, we're not getting anything in return. Plus, we've got a valuable piece of property with water access, it's on a canal. You know, what would we get in return? My proposal with the land swap would be we take the $3 million or so dollars that we have from the Restore Fund that we were putting towards the boat ramp and we move it to the south side of the canal. On the south side, we already have existing boat ramp right next to Highway 19 as well as Wildlife and Fisheries, I believe, has a facility there. And then further down on the park, on the greenway, you have a little inlet cut that was originally designed to be part of, back in 69 on that feasibility study, there was facilities and cuts down to the south side of that canal for the port. And that's what you see there in that picture on the left, is that little cut. With that $3 million, we move it from the north side and we commit it, because that's, we were committing that on state property anyway. We move it down to the south side with two options. You can either take that $3 million and improve the existing boat ramp and make it bigger. I don't know if anyone's ever tried to launch anything there, but it's kind of a tight fit. If you ever need some great entertainment, just get you a lawn chair, go sit out there and watch some inexperienced boaters try to back it up. It's quite interesting. But there's also a parking problem out there. There's not a lot of space to park. That $3 million can go a long way to expanding the access over there for parking and additional amenities. Or you could take it and move it to that inlet cut further down and leave the existing boat ramp. Over here in the corner, you have ample parking. You have restrooms out there. You cut a road in with a new boat ramp that's easily, you could put it in there pretty quick and easy. And you'd have a bigger access for the public to launch boats. And you'd probably get a little bit more bang for your buck out of doing that because now you've got a smaller boat ramp for smaller vessels or kayaks or things of that nature. And then you could have a larger boat ramp with an already-cut inlet there that gives you easier access and you can design it to where it actually is easy to launch out of there as opposed to the hairpin turns you've got to make at the other one. So that is the proposal that we are actually looking at right now. I've had conversations with DEP. They are interested in entertaining it, which means the process goes, we submit a proposal, which I have started working on. We officially submit the proposal. They get with each sub-agency that would be involved. The current owner of the property in question, as well as whoever they would pick to assume the property that we would transfer over. They, it would take them a while to review, make a decision if it's something they want to pursue further. Should they want to pursue further with those agencies, the next step would be conducting surveys and appraisals on parcels of property.
One second, Commissioner Finnegan.
Mr. Van, I'm sorry, I got a little muddy with the details. You point to your screen a lot, but you realize we can't see that right.
I wish I had a laser pointer on this thing here.
I know, I wish you did, too. Okay, I got, I was with you and then I started getting a little muddy with the details. So you're talking about a land swap with DEP.
Yes, ma'am.
I got that part. We've got this property in Wiltokuchi and they own behind where we were looking at the barge canal boat ramp. Correct? Am I right, sir?
The property that we are actually.
God bless you, Kat. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat.
I don't think you can see it on the.
There we go.
Oh, look at that.
So that's where I messed up, where their property is. And then why does that constitute moving? That's where I got lost. So we have the proposed ramp on the north side and you're saying I'm moving to the south side, but I didn't get how that fit into the land swap. That's where I started getting muddy.
So with the landslide, we would take this piece of property in the picture on your left, right? The, right next to, that's the spot where we were looking to do the boat ramp. All right, that's state property that we would swap our 44, 45 acres that we have next to Wiltokuchi Forest. So it meets the minimum criteria of a two-to-one in acreage. We swap that. The reason we would move the boat ramp to the south side is we would use that parcel for Port Citrus. And then on the south side, we still keep our commitment to building a new state boat ramp. Because if we were to do the boat ramp right now on that piece of property, it's state property. But we're using our grant funds from the Restore money to improve state property or facilities. So even though it's in Citrus County, we would move that to the south side. We still get a boat ramp. We get the property to be able to start Port Citrus at a much cheaper cost.
My other question is, you said that the depth was 10 feet.
It's currently 10 to 12, depending on where you're at in the canal.
Well, I assume that's tidal because it goes out to the Gulf. And living on a river, I know that in the winter, it seems to get a lot lower. And then during the summer, when storms are just right, we watch in Crystal River and on Homasasa, water often getting sucked back out. So maybe not at 10 feet, but I've seen 10 feet get really, really low. I mean, we've saw dry even riverbeds. So what is low tide out here? I just, 10 feet's not a lot.
It's not, which is why we would limit it to the barge activity. A barge can go, it can go, you can get a lot on the barge in the 10-foot of water. Some of the bottom would have to be cleaned out a little bit, like I said, because it, over time, it's just not.
Well, you're saying 10 feet, but you're saying a barge can be loaded down and you could get some stuff through in 10 feet. But, you know, low tide, what if, so would operations of whatever kind be halted because of the tide? But they need to watch the tides.
If they were heavily dependent on that, and I'm not an expert on what the tides are in this, I just go off the averages. And that's what I know is the average anywhere from 10 to 12 foot. But it depends on how active they would need material or product coming in and out. So, if you're just doing capsule recovery in the Gulf, then it would only be when, you know, you need to go out there and get it and bring it back.
That seems rare.
Right. But if you are bringing in fuel or 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 diesel or anything else, or those aggregates or whatever, then obviously you would have more activity. So, it would, you know, that's fully loaded on a barge can go at at ten foot. If it's if it's low tide and it's gonna be like that for a long time, you maybe either don't load it all the way up, I mean, whatever the draft could be. I'm I'm not a marine expert in that respect. I'm just looking at the opportunity that 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 we have, that that's my respect that I'm coming for.
Here's where I am, since I I feel like you're getting closer to the end of your presentation. And I was really waiting to hear, you know, more of of the jobs. A land swap, I I don't mind, putting taxpayers' money to something, I do mind. I know that you're talking about fuel in certain storages, which we just, this board, or the board before, created an ordinance because a seven-eleven got built close to the water. And then that spurred an ordinance that we all voted on, because the people of Citrus County did not like any of that. And in that ordinance is not to store certain things in these areas that you're talking about. So, that that's one concern. The other is the ten feet. I I just, I don't see this. The, everyone's economic opportunity, so that's what I really was looking for and to hear. I don't see we're ready to go. I I would hate for the taxpayers to spend millions and millions of dollars on a hope that couldn't be accomplished really since the sixties. And I feel like the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over and expect a different outcome. Now, a different outcome, I think, could possibly come, but it's not today. You know, if there was someone looking at Citrus County, a partnership with the federal government or with Space Florida, or with some industry that says, yes, this is perfect, things could move a lot quicker, right? And I guess if this board saw things differently, I don't think a land swap hurts anything, especially if it's not impactful on the taxpayers at this time for something that may not ever come to fruition. So, I think that we could be set and ready in that way. But this all came about because there's millions of dollars being asked for in the next budget and and those after. That I can't get on board with. Some of these other things that you're looking to do for a possible future, I don't think it poorly impacts our citizens, so so that I could see my way to. But this, every so many years, it gets talked about and it's it's kind of the same thing over and over. It it's it's ten feet, it's ten feet. And I don't think that opens us up to very much, really. Just my two cents.
But the the land swap, just to to clarify, that was, you know, putting the money into the CIP and then, you know, going down the rabbit hole that we don't really have the funds to fund the port. So, this was an option to look at to alleviate that, so is the land swap. But to clarify, there, the appraisals and surveys, at some point, if if it is the sub-agencies within DEP, if they say, yes, our boards are okay with going down this road, let's find out the 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 match pieces here, that we would have to pay for the appraisals and surveys, I just wanted to clarify that. But the cost of appraisals and surveys are a lot less than two to four million dollars putting towards a a property purchase. But I just wanted to clarify that, so that I it it's a significantly less acquisition than outright purchasing it. But I did want to make sure that I clarified that, that there still would be some type of cost that we would have to incur. But it wouldn't be until we had an, some type of okay from the agencies involved. It wouldn't be a hundred percent guarantee, though, because there's still a long process. A property, a land swap will take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months, depending on.
Have you reached out to them already, like you have?
We we've opened the door to see, is this even something that would be entertained? And they did say, yes, we can, but they can't, DEP themselves can't make the determination for their their agencies, their sub-agencies that currently own the property. They would have to review and see, okay, is this something that we think we would be willing to go down the road and do the land swap or do this improvement to our facilities or new facilities or whatever the case may be.
Well, I hope my partners up here, we may not all see it the same, can see that. If you really have reached out to regular, everyday people that's lived here for many, many years, I feel like this was a little surprise. And when it came up and you talked to people, like Citrus County gave us the collective eye roll, really. Like, here we go again. And and any researcher, you know, it it's never really been favorable. So, that's why I said it's the definition of insanity, just keep doing it the same way over and over and hope there's a different outcome.
Well, and from my position, from what I'm trying to accomplish, I look at having this port designation of one of sixteen across the state. That that's, that is a very valuable asset that we have, just having that.
I know you gave us all the numbers, but it was for the state of Florida. And I think that ports have been fantastic for the state of Florida, but we're talking Port of Miami, Port of Fort Lauderdale, Port Canaveral, Port Tampa. That's, those are ports creating jobs and they have a ton of industry there and tourism and cruise lines. That's not gonna be Citrus County.
I I understand.
In that environmentally sensitive area, we don't want to store things that could have a terrible impact on our citizens and our environment.
Right.
So, further limits, the the ten feet further limits. So, I know, I'm probably gonna be the, up here, maybe the unpopular naysayer. And like I said, land swap might make sense, because maybe a partner can come in. Listen, if the federal government comes in and they really want something some years in it from now, they'll make it happen, that may get dredged out, I I don't know. But then, obviously, they stopped it for environmental concerns at some point. I don't know what that looks like if they would try to do it again.
All right. But just 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 to clarify, though, Port Citrus was not, will not be like a Port of Miami, a Port of Tampa or anything like that.
I realize.
Because of, like you said, we have draft depth and we can, we're limited in what we can get in and out. But there are other ports that are still expanding and and growing. Port of Ferndita, you've got Port Putnam, which just came online about a year ago, which ironically, as I mentioned early on, they were the eastern end of the Cross Florida Barge Canal. We were the western end. So, they're investing in into revitalizing their port and bringing it up to speed. And you've got a few others that are smaller, but they are investing in 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 growing. They're investing in infrastructure and property and facilities. Port Manatee is another one that is investing in in their potential growth or economic growth. So, again, it won't be a Port Tampa or Miami, again, because of our limitations. But we do have the ability to carve out a special little niche. And again, I'm not an expert on the the tides in that in that canal. I just see the asset that we have and it's our best untapped economic asset. We've had the designation for over forty years now. I just feel that it's, we're we're in a place that we can actually move forward with it and do something with it and have an impact for the betterment and the future of, a better future for the county and for the region as whole. As I said, this is not just a Citrus County thing, this is going to have impacts across the area, across the region. And it can bring more commerce into that area of the county, which is gonna have more access and more people coming. Once that Parkway is complete, you'll have more activity on that end of Citrus County, on that western tip. So, that's that's the way I look at it. I'm looking at it from a, an opportunity for the the county, obviously, but also a long-term part of our growth that we do have.
I felt like that's, that was supposed to be the airport, right? We got all the money for the airport and that's supposed to be our big economic opportunity and the people of Citrus County will see and it will help them. I mean, there's a lot of money put in that, we're we're not there yet. And I realize, we just got it, we're building it out and we're gonna see how that goes. I just, I I know that you're saying it's busier out there and I, you're doing what you are taught and supposed to do, but I'm telling you, the people of Citrus County, I think, have a totally different thought about what's positive for that area and what's negative. Thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Davis, did you have something?
I'll wait till the others speak.
Commissioner Barrett?
I know you're passionate about what you're doing as the economic director and and trying to get things moving economically. I start looking at these lovely pictures and then you don't show me where you're at exactly. So, I go back and I look and I say, okay, I've been up there when the Coast Guard did their thing. Okay, I went across the bridge and from looking at the one picture with the gray and the peach, with peach color and green, okay, I see where the state forest is, next to the bridge. Okay, is that where we want to put the Barge Canal?
Right next to Highway nineteen? The Barge Canal Boat Ramp?
No, it's our bar, not not the, not the.
You mean the boat ramp?
Our boat ramp.
The boat ramp, okay. Uh, that's where we were looking to put the the boat ramp, that is correct.
Okay, so that's where our citizens and our visitors are gonna be coming with their little boats to go out to the Gulf. And this is why we've been pushing, getting that done, so that we can have a recreational type thing for our citizens and stuff. Okay, next to that is the Coast Guard, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the next section over, which is in the gray, is what you're proposing, which is state land, well, it's not state land, who owns the gray?
That is private property.
Okay, so we personally, as a county, would have to purchase the parcel, that property and be the owner of it before we could actually start to do.
That.
The Port Citrus, correct?
That is an option to purchase a piece of property. But in an effort to alleviate having to spend the type of money we would have to spend on, to acquire property.
Right, you want to transfer the property to green on the south side.
That the purchase of the private property, I'm not advocating for that right now, because we 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 understand we don't have the funds to do it at this point in time.
I have Google Maps up. Got really confusing really fast. This is where we are going on the.
Right.
On, let me finish, on the northwest corner of US nineteen and the Barge Canal is currently where we have the boat ramp.
Right.
Scheduled to go.
Which is owned by DEP.
Okay, and then right here is the Coast Guard facility that wraps around it.
That's this one.
What's confusing is it is the southeast corner, it is over here, which is already an existing boat ramp, existing Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation, existing inlet, and what is the pond to the south of the inlet?
So, that was supposed to be part of the original nineteen sixty-nine vision for Port Citrus. It was gonna be on both sides, but you can see that they they cut it off. It was essentially gonna be a spot where you can do more work, you could bring stuff in and goods, services, whatever the case may be.
So, let me restate this to make sure that we're all on the same board, because I've been quiet over there trying to figure this out.
Yeah.
We're talking about forty-four acres, somewhere up on the Withlacoochee, which is basically has access problems, trading that for this spot right here, which is, for the record, since people can't see where I'm pointing at, the northeast corner of US nineteen and the Cross Florida Barge Canal, and even swap, because this is half the acreage.
That's the northwest.
It would, acreage-wise, it would, it meets the criteria for DEP. But it's not an even swap, because there's different agencies involved, which is where the.
That's the part, that was gonna be my one question.
That's where the grant money comes in.
So, we'll get to that later. Okay, are you clear now? So, this is a much cheaper alternative to do the boat ramp. And he's talking about doing, if we did a land swap, putting Port, the Port Citrus here.
Okay, so he's talking about moving our boat ramp that we're talking about down here.
To an existing facility.
Down here.
Which is much cheaper, because we keep it on.
Which I could never have figured out from any of these lovely maps. And I'm sorry, I'm very glad you brought that up, Commissioner Davis, that was very, very helpful.
I'm just anti-hollering right now.
It is hard to find the right map sometimes.
But then, but then the property surrounding the Coast Guard. Okay, the Coast Guard would be in the middle and we've got a piece on this side, a piece on that side in the back. That's what you want to swap for the.
Wants to swap this piece where the boat ramp was going to go.
Or just the boat ramp part?
Just the boat ramp.
Just the boat ramp part.
Just the boat ramp property, right. It, so, we would swap our properties for the boat ramp property and then take the money that we have from grant funds for the boat ramp. And if the agencies are are okay with it, we would invest in that existing boat ramp that's on the south side or create a new boat ramp for for larger boats in that little cut, the inlet cut that's on the south side.
So, here or here would be the boat ramp. And then this would be within county property, so he could start marketing it for something that is hopefully environmentally okay.
Well, now now that I'm sure where the property is you're talking about, I agree with Commissioner Finnegan. It is too close with chemicals and there's always a possibility of chemical spills. And people keep complaining about that and they complain to me. And we're making a spot for our little boats, you know, for our tourists, for our ci- our citizens, for our fishermen. And they're gonna have to go past this Port Citrus, even though it's only barges, okay? They're gonna have to go past that and around that to get out to where they want to go fishing and having a good time. I I really don't see it being beneficial to the Citrus County residents, especially since you're talking about having to spend millions of dollars again. Okay, we have enough problem trying to get the millions of dollars for the projects we already have on board, that we have promised people, we're gonna build this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. Okay, so for me, I I really do agree with Commissioner Finnegan. This is, this is not what I'd like to see the county do.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I think we're way out ahead of our skis already. And quite frankly, while while these conversations are fine, this workshop, I think, is probably premature at this point. The the only question right now is, do we want to proceed with a possible land swap with DEP? That's it, all the rest of this is white noise at this point. We have no earthly idea if DEP will even approve the offer of the forty-four acres for their thirteen acres on the Barge Canal. As a county, as a community, I would much rather own thirteen acres on the Barge Canal than forty-four acres that we have no access to in the forest. So, that's what the board should be deciding. We should boil this down to a three-minute conversation. Are we interested in directing him to go forward with an offer for a land swap? If or when that land swap ever occurs, then we can broaden the conversation, say, what do we want to do with this? Maybe by that time, you know, the board's position is, we don't want to do anything with it, let's do a park. Let's do a passive park there. While those parks are nice, and I love to see one out at Pirate's Cove at the end of Ozella Trail, maybe that's not the right place for a po- for a park. Or maybe the board at that time, there's, you know, there's an interested party. Or maybe the federal government says, we've got the Coast Guard there, we would like to do more. You've got thirteen acres there, let's partner in this thing. But even those conversations are grossly premature at this point. Let's get it down to, do we want to pursue with the land swap? My answer is yes. Let's put that deal together, put it on DEP's desk and see, see what the answers are. And we can revisit this thing in a year from now.
And the land swap, as I said earlier, would, it would take, if if they agree to continue to entertain it, there's a lot of things that are involved, it's a long process. It's all, it's very drawn out, there's a lot of boards involved that on on state level that have to review and approve things. So, it could take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months at 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 a good rate for that to come to fruition, should it go all the way through. So, again, it gives us more time to actually go through the process. It gives us time to to really think and envision. And who knows, in twenty-four months, we might say we've got a different idea with this piece of property at that time. So, and it also gets us away from having to spend millions of dollars on trying to acquire a piece of property. So, it 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 gives us another option to kind of slow down and and really take it in and possibly get an asset on on the water. You know, and that is another concern of mine, though, because DEP, that sub-agency, knows the value of a piece of property with water access, as as Commissioner Kennard has has stated. But with us being able to come to the table with that three million in grant funds to improve their facilities on the south side, it could balance the everything out. It's it's worth a, it's worth a conversation and they might close the door. And they might close the door on us and say, no, we're not interested. And then we continue on with our initial plans for the boat ramp and revisit that idea.
Can I make one, one quick comment? Just for the record, I love the idea of the boat ramp at the second spot. The parking down there is great. The facilities are already there. That certainly looks like a slam dunk location for a boat ramp.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, too. I've been down there a few times and it, it's, it's easy to get, you could actually build it pretty quick. And it wouldn't take a lot. There's already restrooms over there and it's a big parking lot. You could actually expand that parking lot for boat trailers and, and the like, and there are all those bigger things that you would need.
I've driven down there by vehicle. I was down there yesterday by boat. I, I, I absolutely love, loved the idea of a ramp there and much more so than up at the FWC location.
Right. Yeah, and, and again, it would be, I think that if, if they were to agree to our, our land swap and utilizing those funds, I agree with you, that would be the spot to invest it. But if they feel that they want to just invest in their current facility, that's fine as well, too. I'm not going to argue with them.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis?
Was the, just out of curiosity, was, and to start off, I completely concur with Commissioner Kennard. This, what is really before us right now is land swap, and yes, that seems like a no-brainer to me if we can do that. Just out of curiosity, though, back to, someone remind me, was the boat ramp total? Did that include, was that a land lease or were we trying to purchase that property?
So the, the way it's structured is we had a lease for 10 years, which comes due, I believe, in 2029. And that first 10 years, the agreement is we build some type of ramp. If we build some type of boat ramp, launch for public use within that timeframe before the end of that lease, then we will immediately trigger a revised long-term lease with the state to continue to operate and maintain that boat ramp on their property. And I believe that would be another 40-year or so.
So the land swap doesn't actually save us any money on that property?
It does not.
Because it was going to be a land lease. That's what, I thought it was a land lease, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Commissioner Finnegan?
I don't know if you're the right person to answer this, Mr. Howard. I don't know if, maybe someone, a different staff member. But just before we make the final decision, the boat ramp, the existing boat ramp has always been there. So before I sat on this board, barge canal, boat ramp was an agenda item, you know, trying to get funding for this. Why wasn't, why wasn't the focus on the existing boat ramp before? Like, are we missing anything?
Yeah, I just think, just having discussions, I mean, this is not even something in play, I think, until other parties started thinking about it, of that, that concept. I think this, that's, that's my understanding.
It's, it's owned by the FWC.
Yeah, it's owned by them now, so.
Yeah, it's owned by them.
That trailhead there, I call it the trailhead there, so.
Okay, I was thinking we had that boat ramp and FWC was around it.
It's not ours.
It's not ours.
No.
Okay, so if we did do that, just like, you know, when we don't own something, we just dealt with that with Swift Mud, we could put money into that boat ramp, but then it's still not ours.
Correct.
So then FWC could obviously do whatever they want with the boat ramp or close the boat ramp.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Davis?
Commissioner Kennard, were you talking about, the two of you did a little back and forth with the parking and stuff? I'm looking at Google Maps. Is that that inlet? Is that where you were thinking to do the boat ramp and if we move to the southeast corner?
Yes, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the southeast corner. It's actually east of the bridge on the south side, beyond the FWC station. There's a square or rectangular cut into the property.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. If you go, if you go by vehicle down there, they've got a nice decent-sized parking area and very nice restroom facilities down there already.
It's a fair distance from where a ramp would be, though, the parking, isn't it?
No.
No? Okay.
Should we pull up a picture on the screen so we all know what we're talking about? Just a thought.
I have more questions about this boat ramp, right, because I don't think I've been on that side, so.
Yeah, so if you look at the screen here, the picture on the left, this is looking from the east towards Highway 19. The inlet is right there in the front.
Put your curse, your, your, that thing.
Wait a minute.
How many slips are at the FWC boat ramp?
You just had it.
Just.
On the, on the left-hand side, I'm not looking to the west.
There you go.
There's no slips.
Yeah. So who owns that parking lot with the restrooms?
It's all state property.
That's a state park?
It's part of the park system, yes.
Right.
And then the, the cutout that goes beyond that, where you're looking, thinking about boat ramp, the state owns all that, too, on both sides?
Yes, ma'am. All of that property is, is state property there.
May I?
Is that FWC or Greenway Trails?
I think it's a combination of both. I think it is actually Greenway Trails and then FWC in partnership with them has their facility there.
So we're saying 3.5 million we currently have would build like slips, like ramps? More than, more than that one that appears there?
Yes, the, the, the proposal is to include the grant money for improvement to their facility for whatever. And, and it's really, I, our idea is to create a new boat ramp in that, that cut. But if DEP or Greenway Trails or whoever decides, you know what, let's invest it in more parking at our existing area in some way, shape or form, then I, again, we're, we're just committing the funds to improve their facility in exchange, as part of the exchange.
A lot of ifs right now.
Right, and it's, it's a proposal.
I mean, if we're, if we're just looking for consensus with a lot of ifs, I, I don't mind you asking. I don't mind us exploring the idea.
Yeah, and, and if they, if, if they do agree to proceed down this path, as I said, at some point, there would be a cost that we would have to incur. And then, of course, we would come back before we do anything with that. And that would be the appraisals and surveys. Again, it's, it's not a, it's not a typical, like, home survey or appraisal that you would get when you're purchasing a home. There's a little bit more involved. It's very unique pieces of property. So we'll, we'll cross that bridge if, if and when we come to it. No pun intended.
Perfect. I want to applaud you for your efforts. You're doing exactly what we hired you to do. And to me, that's, that's why we bring in an economic development counterpart to go out and look for these opportunities. And that's exactly what we're looking for. We're looking for opportunities. I think for us to go down that rabbit hole and say it's going to be something that's, has an environmental impact, we don't know that. I mean, it could be building something. It, it may not have oil, gas, anything that has an environmental concern to it. You know, Orlando is nationally the hub for simulation and modeling. That's 60,000 jobs a year. I mean, and the economic impact is huge. It doesn't mean that whatever we decide to do there, it could be something with Space Florida developing. But, but just so that the public understands, there's a lot of money that comes from Space Florida. But the government has, being Citrus County, you have to own the property in order to qualify for the funding. So I think that's exactly what we're looking for. Today, I think there's a consensus, from what I'm gathering, hopefully, that to let you move forward, to see if we can do a land swap, see if we can work out some deals to go ahead and potentially get working on this boat ramp and see where we can go. Board members, so we're looking for a consensus.
Yes.
I agree.
And great job, Steve, seriously.
No.
I agree with the land swap. That doesn't mean I'm on board at this time for a Port citrus. But I think Commissioner Kennard stated that well, you know, 40 acres of landlocked versus 13 of water activity that our citizens can use, for whatever reason. Yeah, I'm, I'm very interested in seeing what you can find out about that.
So we have a consensus for one.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the public at this time. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board?
Good morning, Commissioners. Robin Orlando, Don Ellen. I'm on this, I'm on the citrus side of the county, though. So the problem with that area they're talking about, I'm an avid kayaker and hiker and really familiar with that. If you read the signage, there's the cut-in in the front that the water goes into the barge canal. Behind it, what that is, is an old burrow pit. When they were digging, they fractured the aquifer there. It filled with water. And the government at the time said, this is bad because if we break through, we could actually drain the fresh water out into the barge canal and lower the water table potentially. So the first thing you would need if you were going to pursue this would be hydro geological survey of that whole area ahead of time. Secondly, Felburn Park is part of the Cross, Cross Florida Greenway and has funding for that is, is the beginning, if you're going to hike the trail all the way over to the west coast. It's valued by outdoor recreation community for that. So taking that and putting a Marina Marina in there of the type that's going to have a lot of large boats circulation, I think the public is definitely going to be opposed to that. The, the other spot next to the, where the Coast Guard Station is being built makes more sense because it's out and away from that. But particularly the aquifer problem, I've looked at a lot of development projects. We're getting ready to talk about the sand mine in Crystal River at the end of the week. There is a lot of potential impacts on the aquifer being considered, and you really need to look at that. Fresh water is not unlimited and it, the spring flow rates across the state are down about 30%. Our testing at Three Sisters, I mean, I kayak, I'm in that water. If you talk to people that grew up here just 30, 40 years ago, it's not, I mean, the water is filthy now compared to what they saw. The seagrass, yes, we're trying to rebuild it, but unless you have good water quality, and this is for private wells, for water for drinking and other residential uses, if something happens with the aquifer, this county is going to be in, in dire straits. So I would urge you, small projects, please protect the aquifer, and large projects, again, I'm off topic, but the lagoon at Tuscany, the residences, I get, it's platted, build it, but don't allow that lagoon. That's 11 million gallons of water, 8,000 gallons a day being used. And I'm telling you, Swift Mud has one, has one dialogue, but if you look at the actual numbers, our water is in trouble. You know, it's not an infinite supply. Citrus isn't the only county that's growing. So back to the burrow pit, I don't think that you can use that. If you're thinking like, hey, cut that wall through and eventually build a bigger marina, not going to happen unless you want to find out where all that fresh water goes out into the barge canal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Partners in crime.
Hello?
Hi, PJ Offhammer, Citrus County. You know I'm the emotional one, so I'm going to be everywhere. I'm happy that you are not talking about more details of the port because there's so many things I could tear down that's just fire lieutenant, paramedic, hazmat issues, environmental issues. We don't have the infrastructure to even be considering anything in that fragmented section of the county. The time is not now and hopefully it's not never. But the, the questions that are kind of sticking with me right now that I think we need to look at, you said land swap, and, and my heart just went boom. I mean, I'm sure all of you know about the consternation in the state with DEP land swaps that have gone on. And even if this is an innocuous one, ooh, that's going to get you some really bad press. So you might want to think about that. And, and more importantly, we've been working on this boat ramp for a long time. People need the boat ramp. We've spent significant amount of money doing plans and permitting and whatever. What happens to all that money we've spent if we're going to swap places? Do we have to start all over again? How much longer is that going to delay it so that people still have no place to go? It's, it's a serious consideration. And then the other thing is, anything you do up there, when, when Port citrus first popped up, Levy County folks were incensed. So, yeah, maybe a regional asset, but not really, because they don't want it, they're not going to have it, they're going to make life miserable. So, you know, we need to be good neighbors. We need to be good environmental consideration neighbors, not just the aquifer, but the other things. You talk about capsule recovery. Well, nobody really talks about what happens when those capsules land and all of the pollutants that are in the water. Do we really need that in an environmental coast? It's probably not the best thing. The shelf, the geographical limitations of our area are such that we really don't need big boats. We don't need big barges. The cost of dredging, the cost of any pollutants that we would have to come up with. I remember when they looked at dredging the Miami River in Miami years ago and they realized they couldn't do it because of everything that was there and the cost involved to do it. So I hope you take this, this, look at this very carefully. Don't jump onto this when we have other needs in the county. We really do. I mean, we know that. We know we're working on airport, we're doing things like that. Do things that are actually going to be feasible, rather than throw away money that we don't have. And keep the nature coast natural. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chair, do you want him to keep the pictures up or? Dixie, do you need any pictures?
Sure.
Oh.
Good afternoon. My name is Dixie Hollins, Post Office Box 277, Crystal River, Florida. I want to commend the Commissioners and I want to commend the state of Florida for coming up with this idea of this land swamp. If y'all are landowner up there on the Cross Florida Barge Canal, as Mr. Kennard said, and all of y'all agreed, you have a lot of opportunities here, not only Port citrus, but other opportunities, as mentioned, partnerships with the federal government. I worked four years on a location of the Coast Guard. I would like to invite you all to come up and look at that facility one at a time. Got a nice area of place to get up there and look at it. They're spending $45 million on that property. And they have gone in there, they're going to have a small, very small boat ramp in there, they're going to have their barge, the boat in there, the big boat in there. Also, you talk about a boat ramp. We've been talking about a boat ramp for a long, long time. We all know that we want a boat ramp. We also know that we don't have that kind of dollars to build that boat ramp in that location. There's an opportunity here to still have a boat ramp on the other side of the barge canal at the trailhead of the Greenway Trails, as mentioned, bathroom's already there, parking's already there. And it's not in FWC's backyard, et cetera, et cetera. It'd be an opportunity to have the county own some land, do what they want to do with it, i.e. Port citrus or something else, and also have your boat ramp that I think is important to this county. And I appreciate your all's support, and I think it's a great idea for the economic engine. No, it's not 25-foot deep. It's 10, 12-foot deep. And that canal's always dug 10, 12-foot deep. It's, sometimes it silts in, but that is silting. I have done lots of trial, our company's done lots of barging in and out of there over the years. It's a great economic engine opportunity for you all. I encourage you all to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're going to close open to the public. Oops, sorry, I, I got ahead of myself. Closing open to the public. We're going to adjourn the meeting, but we do have the consensus, so thank you for coming out. Adjourned.